Yes. Any special claims?
None.
Action on the bill list as submitted by the county auditor, roll call.
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. Okay, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin today, we have a proclamation in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental healthness, mental health is essential to overall health and mental health conditions are common, manageable, and treatable. And one in five people experience a mental health condition in any given year, with half of Americans meeting the criteria for a diagnosable condition in their lifetime, often beginning in adolescence. And whereas it is essential to educate the public about the signs, symptoms, and available resource for mental health support, encouraging individuals to seek help and prioritize their mental well-being. And whereas it is vital to seek early treatment for mental health and doing so saves lives and leads to better long-term outcomes. And whereas we encourage individuals, organizations, and communities to take proactive steps for mental well-being, from seeking support through professional help, through participating in community initiatives that promote mental health. And whereas we recognize the resilience and strength of individuals who manage mental health challenges, as well as dedication of mental health professionals who provide support and care. And now therefore be it proclaimed that Polk County Supervisors declare the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Polk County, Iowa. Encourage everyone to utilize resources, seek support, and continue to break down this stigma to create a future where mental health is prioritized for all. And be it further proclaimed that Polk County Board of Supervisors continues its commitment to partner with community organizations to ensure that all disability services are accessible, valuable, and culturally appropriate for all residents of Polk County, signed this day. I wonder if we have anyone here to speak on this topic today? Not hearing anyone, so I will, I will, we'll be happy to do pictures afterwards if anybody's wanting them and I do have these proclamations. And I believe the next proclamation that we have is for Earth Day. And Supervisor Holm is going to share that.
All right, thank you. Proclamation, Earth Day, April 22nd, 2025. Whereas our planet is singular and vital sanctuary, teeming with diverse range of ecosystems, flora, and fauna that provides essential services and support the well-being of all inhabitants and whereas the continued health and vitality of our planet are intrinsically linked to the well-being of the present and future generations, requiring concerted efforts to protect and sustain our natural resources. And whereas environmental degradation, including deforestation, pollution, climate change, and the loss of biodiversity poses a significant threat to the equilibrium and prosperity of our global ecosystems. And whereas Earth Day, celebrated on April 22nd, serves as a poignant reminder and call to action for individuals, communities, businesses, and governments worldwide to reaffirm their commitment to the environmental stewardship and sustainable practices. The collective actions of informed citizens can foster greater environmental awareness, promote conservation efforts, and drive the adoption of eco-friendly technologies and renewable energy sources. And whereas on this day, we join together to foster a harmonious relationship with nature, to honor and protect our planetage, natural heritage, for current and future generations. And now therefore let it be proclaimed that we, the Polk County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2025 to be Earth Day. Signed on this day to be celebrated on April 22nd.
Thank you Supervisor. Any comments on this? I believe we have one.
Thank you Supervisor Holm. My name is Adam Drayer, here in the Polk County IT Department. Here to represent the Climate Action Team, which is a collection of Polk County employees dedicated to finding ways to mitigate the effects of climate change inside of Polk County operations. In 2021, the Board of Supervisors signed a proclamation looking to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 90% by 2040, and the Climate Action Team has been tasked with finding ways to do that. We have created four subcommittees to that effect, our Power Subcommittee, our Fleet and Fuel, the Land and Water, and Government Operations. And these four subcommittees have all sought ways to be, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions while also being fiscally responsible and wherever possible save taxpayer money. Good examples of this would be the solar panels placed on this building, River Place, as well as the Northside Senior Center. The River Place panels just finished last week and are being tied in now. So we'll start to realize savings across those three buildings and start to look to the future to install more panels. We've also looked for electric vehicle replacements, replaced internal combustion vehicles where appropriate, and looked to plant native grasses, flora, to harvest water and reduce the amount of maintenance needed for turf. These efforts are all geared toward reducing our greenhouse gas emissions while also, over the long term, saving the taxpayer money. We realize it can be difficult to justify these expenses. We realize that in a fiscal environment we're in, we've got to find good ways as a group to drive forward. So our future efforts are all geared around how do we do these things efficiently? How do we save money while we're doing them while still hitting that 90% reduction? So the Climate Action Team is here today. I really wanted to just shout them out, they're doing a great job. They're all volunteering their time on top of their day-to-day responsibilities to make this happen, to make, to make Polk County lead the way into the future in sustainability. Thank you very much.
Adam, thank you, and thank you for all your efforts. We've, we've all noticed the, the changes that have gone on throughout Polk County, and we're seeing more and more signs that we're, we're moving in the right direction. I know we have a big goal to be 90% reduction by 2040, and it's going to take all of us working together to get there. So we'll go ahead and do a picture now with the Climate Action Team, and then, and then after that picture, Annie, do you want to come up for the mental health picture? Okay. We'll go ahead and do that now with the board.
The first public hearing is a public hearing on fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and certification of taxes.
Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Is there anyone here speaking on the public hearing on certification of taxes? Hearing done, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and ask for a motion.
I'm moved.
Yes, I did. And this is on item number eight, resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget and certification of taxes. Holm?
Yeah, is this, just for clarification, this, I hadn't seen any changes, this, does still include the departments that came in that weren't, didn't hit their targets that were recommended by our budget manager?
Yes, it follows.
Pardon me?
Yeah, it follows those recommendations. Nothing has changed since the public meeting, so it's basically as advertised, no changes since that public meeting.
Example, the Batmobile thing or whatever for the sheriff?
Say that again?
The Batmobile or whatever that thing is for the sheriff. The car.
Or vehicle to provide officer safety? That is in the budget, yes.
Okay.
What about the county attorney's office? Did they get any additional funding?
The only additional funding they received stemming from the public comments was the offender program, and I might not be saying that title right, totaling $33,000. And then the only other change would have been the increases to salaries that the board voted on.
You mean the union and the all other salaries?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
No.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes. At this time, we will take public comments.
Mr. Chairman, Member of the Board, the first thing I'd like to say is that I was going to appear on the budget, but you went so quickly that old people like me couldn't get up here, you know, so I'm disappointed by that. It seems that things seem to be bypassing the public more and more. So anyway, on your advice before last, last meeting I was here, you know, you suggested that I was presenting, you know, redundant information and that the board had already heard it and would be taken into consideration. That was not my intent today. I presume that the board did listen and did take into consideration. My only concern today was part of the budget that you're going to spend $31 million on debt service, on paying principal and interest. That seems like a lot to me. $31 million is a lot of money. And I would only encourage the board, and I realize none of you have to respond, encourage the board to try and eliminate some of this debt rather than continue to add it on. Also at the direction of the Chair of the Board, I have two items that I wish to comment on. Again, realizing that as of today, you don't, you're not required to respond in any way, although I might ask my personal supervisor. We're moving the risk management function from the Human Services Department to the Board of Supervisors, and we're creating a whole new position. This, this is going to cost you next year's budget, which I presume is in here, a quarter of a million dollars. You know, I thought we had a, a study of positions. I don't know that that was in there, but I do have a question of the county administrator, if he's allowed to respond. Are you anticipating that the new department head position will involve a lawyer? Would that be required of the job description?
So a couple of things. On the law degree in the job description, it is preferred, not required. But in regards to that position, it's not really a good fit in human resources. It should report to either the administrator or the executives. County our size or really any local government should have a, an administrator in risk management, a subject matter expert, someone who can really deal with all the uncertainty we're facing, all the risks we're facing, help this board make data-driven decisions based on, you know, analytical modeling, statistical modeling, financial modeling, which this position will be able to do, function at a much higher level than the historic risk manager, helping our county navigate, again, the uncertainty and the myriad of risks that we face. And it'll also be critical in implementing a strategic plan, ensuring compliance with that strategic plan. It'll help us renegotiate insurance contracts, ultimately saving a lot of tax dollars. I think there's a huge return on this investment. We need a proactive approach in assessing our risk and, and avoiding risk and ultimately figuring out what level of risk are we going to accept. And I think it's really important that we have an individual that is qualified in that position to help this board make decisions in protecting the county, our assets, our citizens. So I see this as, as a real win if approved for, for Polk County.
And, and we don't do that now. None of those functions you just laid out are not being done now?
A, a great deal of those functions are not happening, especially on the, on the statistical and analytical modeling, to really help us forecast into the future what risk we're going to be facing. This, this position will also be able to help us with complying with new laws. Obviously, there's a lot of new laws at the federal level, at the state level. This position will help with that. It'll also help us ensure that we're complying with bond issuance, which has been, I would say, an area of deficit for this county. And as I've been here evaluating operations, there's been a number of times where we've seen deficiencies by not having a position be able to perform these functions.
And your preference would be somebody with a law degree to do that?
Yeah, as I did different comps and evaluations, especially in other counties our size, but also in the private sector, it appeared that someone with a law background, given that it will help us comply with different regulations, OSHA and other laws, that it could benefit from that. Doesn't have to be a lawyer, but I, I could see it benefiting us.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you on anything you've said. However, it has always been the situation that the county attorney's office, particularly the Civil Bureau, has always represented the board in legal matters. Now you're separating out a whole different function to be reviewed by an attorney that is not part of the county attorney's office. I realize this is not a debate. I think that's wrong.
So, so again, it doesn't have to be an attorney, but it also would not usurp the statutory requirements of the county attorney's office. It would not defend the county. It would simply make sure we're complying with laws, so it wouldn't necessarily take over any of those functions of the county attorney's office.
Mr. Sears, you were going to ask me specifically, I think, my position, you know, is we don't, we don't need the position. Our, the current HR Director has a law degree, she's an attorney, she's fully capable of doing that work, and there's absolutely no reason to add this position, in my, in my opinion.
My opinion also, but I'm just a taxpayer, so what do I know? The other item that I wanted to address is the item 41, which is, involves the hotel. When this was first proposed years ago, you know, I publicly opposed this and suggested that the only way this hotel was going to make any money is if, if you reserved an entire floor for slot machines. Because this was not going to make money, and it does not make money. And what the hell is the county doing operating a hotel? I realize that you don't have, you don't have a specific ownership of the hotel, but you do appoint their board. And I just, I just wondered why you want to involve yourself in every Tom, Dick, and Harry's proposal that makes rich folks richer. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Or in order?
Good morning, Chair McCoy and members of the board. My name is Carol Maher and I live in downtown Des Moines. Last night, when I was reviewing the agenda items, I came across item number 29, the filming of cops with the Polk County Sheriff Department. Now, when I prepared my remarks last night, I had forgotten about how over my left shoulder I was going to have two armed individuals within arms reach, which is frankly intimidating and hostile, and I'm not sure why you would have that. Are you really so afraid that we're going to do something to you? It's really, it's really over the top, frankly. But here are my comments, which I hope won't offend the people standing really close to me. Looking ahead at item number 29, interim county administrator is recommending the sheriff's office work with a California production company to film episodes of cops here. Ick. Why would we want to put our worst foot forward on television? This show promotes a hyper masculine view of policing and ridicules people on their worst day. They also view crime with a racial bias that perpetuates racist attitudes. Please, please reconsider the decision to allow a production company to prey upon Polk County's most vulnerable residents. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments today? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and move on to permits.
Number, excuse me, number 10, fiscal year 25, 26, applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits for those listed on the agenda.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly? Supervisor Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 11, renewal application for Class E retail alcohol license for Midwest Cheers located at 4995 Merle Hay Road.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Resolutions. Number 12, resolution approving the final plat of Sprague Estates, Plat 1. Number 13, resolution authorizing Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing on May 6th on disposal of county interest in real estate to Des Moines Waterworks. 14, resolution approving consulting agreement with Happy at Home Consulting. Number 15, resolution regarding annexation application by the City of Ankeny for territory within Polk County. Numbers 16 and 17 are resolutions authorizing Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing for May 6th to consider plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for 2025 Norwoodville URA sanitary sewer improvements and Fisher Lake wetland restoration project. And number 18, resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year 26, secondary road budget and road program to the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Moved collectively.
Yes, I did.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 19, resolution approving lease agreement with the Marine Corps League.
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 20, resolution approving naloxone use policy and procedures. Number 21, resolution approving amended agreement with services with community support advocates. And number 22, resolution approving master services agreement with FP Consulting.
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 23, resolution approving events lease contract with the Iowa State Fairgrounds for the 2025 Polk County Senior Fest. And number 24, resolution approving first amended agreement with Wesley Life for senior congregate meal program.
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number 25, resolution approving contract with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services for fiscal year 25, 26 immunization services funding. And number 26, resolution approving contract with Fab Rehab to address lead hazard repairs repairs at two six two two Payne Road.
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-seven, resolution authorizing auditor's office to publish notice of public hearing for May sixth for approval of deed of conservation easement to Great Outdoors Foundation.
Move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yeah.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number twenty-eight, resolution approving agreement with Langley Productions for Film Production Services. Number twenty-nine, resolution approving twenty-eight E agreement with the Iowa Department of Revenue to participate in alcoholic beverage enforcement. And number thirty, resolution approving contract with US Army Corps of Engineers for law enforcement services at the Sailorville Lake and Recreation Area.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Uh, I'm gonna, I, I'd like to pull out number, um, what the hell number is it? Twenty-eight?
Okay. So, this will be the vote on number twenty-nine and thirty, and we will return to twenty-eight in just a moment. Uh, Home, is that still a yes?
Correct.
Hawkinsmith, is that still a yes?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Okay, this will be the vote on number twenty-eight, resolution approving agreement with Langley Productions for Film Production Services. Home?
Yes.
I, I apologize, I need a motion in a second, since we pulled that out.
Oh.
So move.
Second.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yeah.
Al, Connolly?
No.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number thirty-one, resolution approving twenty-eight E agreement with the Iowa Office of the State Medical Examiner.
So move.
Second.
Uh, hold on a minute. Okay, so, I haven't really fully seen this twenty-eight E, so I'm not sure i- if it's final or not. So I have a, a couple of questions. Let me get my notes here, I have so much paperwork. Bear with me a second. My first comment is, um, I think we have the cart before the horse, but I could be wrong on that. If we're gonna have a twenty-eight E, and, which means, I think, the state, I, I know we had a state, we had a staff meeting that started a, a process of dialogue that the state wanted to, you know, we were having a discussion about having the medical examiner, the office, moved to the state, at least the Dr. Deal and, uh, uh, having autopsies done by the state. So in my opinion, I think we kind of skipped a process, which means that we're taking a, a, the statutory forensic authority away from the county, which is kind of a big deal. I don't know if, if, what the next step would be in that, but that, that's worrisome to me, so that's why I think we got the cart before the horse. There's not really been any other discussion since that meeting that we had a month or so ago, and Director Garcia came with Dr. Klein, and we discussed it, and no other really commitment or discussion with the board. I know there's been some supposedly due diligence, whatever that means exactly, um, and so, I've got questions on, uh, what is it actually gonna cost? I know there was some testimony fees at four hundred and fifty dollars an hour, um, I know that it's the, the autopsies are gonna cost us nineteen hundred dollars this year, and it's gonna go up to supposedly twenty-four hundred dollars by the state. They charge us for toxology, photography, radiology, um, and then the biggest thing is, are they gonna, are they going to be accredited, a full accreditation, um, all the time? And what happens if they're not? And then I, I don't understand, I look at, um, the, uh, org chart, where are we gonna get part-time, uh, ME, uh, county, uh, county medical examiner and a deputy medical examiner? Cause I think somewhere I read in Frank's notes, we're gonna have, uh, part-timers. I, I don't know how that's gonna happen. You all said that the reason why we're doing this is because we can't, we're saving money on a building. You know, of course, we'd all, all love to have a building, who wouldn't want to have a new building? We're the state capital, or the biggest county in the state, um, and we pro, and I'm sure that we've made some commitments, but it's not saying that we need to have a building. I think we made a commitment to Dr. Deal, and we've really, i- i- it's how we treated him is unbelievable to me, when we signed the contract. Now, I know there's a, a severance, which is gonna cost us money, uh, but this, this is wrong, and y'all ought to be ashamed, that we're gonna continue to put something, turn over local control to the state of Iowa. And we're not saving any money. You can talk all you want, but you're blaming the state, you're blaming a building, that we're gonna build this building. Nobody says we have to build a building. I don't understand this at all. I will be voting no on anything to do with the medical examiner. You have skipped way too many steps, and so, so what on transparency? Where'd that go?
So Angela?
Knock the door.
I'll speak on a little bit of what I've been, calls I've been getting from funeral home directors in my district, and they've all been supportive of this and understand that there's going to be a bump in the road as we transition. But from their word, and my observation of being here for just about four months, the medical examiner's office in Polk County has not been performing well for the past ten years, and I think that's putting it very kindly. So, there was some anxiousness about transitioning over to the state, but the state presents a path forward, as Dr. Garcia mentioned, a runway for capacity. We lose Dr. Deal, it sounds like he's going anyway, and we're back to sending everything to the state where they don't have the ability to do it. Now, to your terms, or to your comments about the facility, I met with Broadlawns, they don't have space, they can't reconfigure. Even our former administrator, in his, uh, time I spent with him, mentioned that the facility is dated and is gonna require a tremendous amount of investment. The third thing that's extremely appealing to me, and after visiting with Dr. Deal and visiting with a few other people, is this fellowship program that does not exist currently in the state of Iowa, Polk County's is not the same. We merge with the state, we have the capacity to create a fellowship program to hold more pathologists in their training, to retain them in Iowa, and get more than six pathologists in the state of Iowa. The state's already approved their expansion, ninety-seven counties are sending their, um, their, uh, their decedents up to the state, the twenty-eight agreement's been going on, it's been being reviewed by legal, it's back and forth. I think we're exactly where we need to be today to take that first step, and to save, again, Dr. Deal presented in his, and whether it's, you know, an estimate of twenty-five million to forty-five million dollars a year to build a facility, over a million dollars worth of salary will be saved just in the, uh, proceeding in this fashion. Of course, we still have to have our ME office, it's gonna be at a different capacity, though. So we can talk about that later, I'm not as detailed on that, but for me, this only makes sense for the long-term stability, people to have their loved ones processed and get the full answers, because we can't continue to operate as we've operated in at least the last ten years.
Well, I take offense on what you just said about the last ten years. Now, since, uh, the, probably since, however long it's been since we haven't had a, uh, since Dr. Schmuck left, there, it's been a rocky road, there's no question about it. That's why we had to spend a million dollars, uh, in twenty twenty-four, and probably twenty twenty-three, sending our bodies up to the state. That's where the million dollar comes from. But to say it's been rocky, that is just absolutely not true. We had one of the best forensic pathologists in the country, so I don't know where you're getting that information.
Well, I, I told you, I got it from two funeral home directors in my district, that called me and personally told me that, so I'm getting it firsthand experience. So, I, I don't know where, I mean, we have histories of payouts that we just did as a board in February that cost our taxpayers tons of money, for someone who were, that we brought back, and there continues to be issues in the ME office today that we're aware of, and we're working through them. So, I mean, we were gonna disagree on this, but you don't have to impugn my integrity by saying, I, you don't know where I'm getting my stuff, cause I told you, I was getting it from funeral home directors in my district.
Well, and I'm telling you, I don't agree. I guess that's, you know, you can, we can agree to disagree.
I'm, I'm.
So, I've, I've been here.
I welcome you on that, and I agree, we can politely agree to disagree.
Well, I'd just say, you know, since, since I've been on the board, we've had, uh, constant turnover, we've had trouble attracting candidates, we've sent, uh, actually, um, entered into, uh, an agreement with the state during that time period when we were not able to perform, uh, forensic pathology in our own, in our own labs. Uh, we've lost our accreditation, we're working in a third-world, uh, facility in terms of the size and scope that we're trying to, uh, handle, and as a result of that, I, I think that, you know, having toured both facilities, having looked at what we have at Broadlawns, and what their, what their, you know, their capacity is, and I think Proctor's made it very clear, they have no room to expand at all, and actually need to repurpose the space that we do have. So we are gonna be forced into a lab situation that's gonna cost somewhere between twenty-five and forty million dollars to build, and so I think this, this gives us an opportunity to partner with the state and do what ninety-seven other counties are doing. They're putting a thirty-six million dollar expansion on already, uh, a state-of-the-art facility, so they'll be able to actually move, uh, through using, uh, ten stations for ten different bodies per, 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 per day, uh, to, to actually start autopsies there. They have the cold storage, the facilities, the morgue, the processing, the labs, the, uh, state-of-the-art evidence collection facilities, the separation, the chain of custody that, uh, is required by law enforcement, the relationship with, with, uh, DCI on campus there. I, I think that, that we would be foolish to think that we could, in this, in this age of, of where, you know, we're being constrained by the legislature on how much we can spend and what, what our growth is gonna be moving forward, um, that, that I believe this offers us a unique opportunity to enter into a partnership and relieve some of that stress. They are a named accreditation facility, we are not. Uh, they intend to maintain their name accreditation, part of their expansion is to do that. They, they, Dr. Klein has given us his word that, that is his commitment to, to always maintain that name accreditation, that's very important to the state of Iowa. Um, so I guess, uh, what, what really excites me is, is a potential fellowship with DMU University to actually grow and attract new students to the, to the, uh, profession. I think that's, uh, a, a great opportunity for Polk County and everyone else in the future. I know that Frank has done a lot of due diligence, but I, I wanna say on the, um, on, on the whole process, you know, bringing in the HHS director from the state of Iowa with the, with the state medical examiner and, uh, Dr. Deal, uh, was an extraordinary act of transparency. It was an act of, uh, how, how would this work? Uh, how would we, how would we lay out a twenty-eight E agreement to move forward? Um, this has been one of the most transparent processes that we've ever engaged in as a county. I think, I think that the fact that we had that kind of a high-level meeting with our Board of Supervisors, when we could ask questions, we could bring, uh, people together, we had law enforcement here, we had the county attorney here, um, I think, I think that was a, a sincere and genuine act of transparency, and I think it created an opportunity for everyone to be fully aware of what we were potentially entering into. And I think the work that's been done since then has only improved the, improved the reliability of the relationship going forward.
So what's the yearly budget?
Frank?
The annual budget for autopsies, or the annual budget for the medical examiner's office?
Both.
So for the medical examiner office, about four point three million for autopsies alone is budgeted one million, which was already budgeted, um, so we won't see a, a financial impact on the expense to the state, at least in year one and year two. Um, I can tell you, there's a combination of not just, uh, cost avoidance, but cost savings by, um, giving up nearly a million dollars in, in FTEs, so we will continue to realize those savings over time, um, in perpetuity, and I give a lot of credit to Dr. Deal, who has worked really great on, uh, transition plan, and in absolutely no way are we giving up local control of our ME office, that is going to stay. We already have really good, uh, candidates in line for, um, a point five FTE chief medical examiner, a point two five deputy medical examiner, and we maintain all of our investigators, and so, to a certain degree, it's business as usual, just the autopsies, uh, will go to the state. And, and to your, to your point, um, the ME's office has been a constant pain point for the county. Reoccurring turnover, personnel issues, zero, financial oversight, none. And so, this, this is a mess that needs cleaned up, it either wasn't addressed or wasn't addressed appropriately. I give a lot of credit to, to this board to, to put the stakeholders together to find what I feel is a real solution, moving forward, um, that will address the needs of, of the Polk County citizens in relation to the medical examiner's office.
You really like to blame people, I tell ya. So, uh, so we still don't have the, the, the fees on what it's gonna cost for reports, and do we have, uh, signed twenty-eight E agreement from the state back to us? Because, you know, we're kind of backwards here, we got a twenty-eight E agreement on the agenda, I don't know if it's signed by the county attorney's office, and is it backed from the state of Iowa? So we know exactly what we're agreeing to.
Well, the agreement is, is laid out on the agenda, is for discussion today, so that's for you to deliberate, um, if you decide to vote and approve that agreement, it would then go to the state for approval, um, but we took this as a first step to allow this board an opportunity to deliberate, um, the twenty-eight E as-is.
Well, what is it? As-is? When you say as-is, what does that mean?
Uh, so the agreement is for autopsy services, and then it outlines other terms, um, within twelve months, either party can opt out of the agreement. Did you want me to go through all of the terms?
Well, are, okay, let's, let's just say, are they gonna be completely and, and agreeable to their full accreditation?
Yes, they were agreeable to that, yes.
They signed on the dotted line on that?
They have not.
Or we don't know yet?
No, they have not signed yet, so again, we took this as a first step, um, given if the board didn't approve this today, it would be a moot point, so I wanted to provide the twenty-eight E to this board to deliberate, um, after that board staff, I think, provided a lot of clarity on how this relationship would work in collaboration, um, with the state, which I think is really what, you know, our tax base is asking us for, find ways to cooperate with other governments to maintain the service and reduce the tax, uh, to their citizens, and this does that. So, um, again, I, I, I would recommend this agreement be approved as-is, um, I think it is fair to both parties, and will provide a sustainable solution moving forward.
Do you have a motion?
Roll call?
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
No.
Connolly?
No.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number thirty-two, because resolution approving position modifications within the medical examiner's office, and number thirty-three, resolution approving severance agreement with Rory Deal, D.O.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
No.
Connolly?
No.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers thirty-four and thirty-five are resolutions approving position modifications within the Behavioral Health and Disability Services Department, Community, Family and Youth Services Department, and Auditor's Office, and within the Board of Supervisors Office, and the Human Resources Department.
Move.
I'd like to have thirty-five separate.
Okay.
So I move thirty-four?
Second.
Okay, so for number thirty-four, Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
So then I'll move thirty-five?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so, uh, regarding thirty-five, this is, um, where I picked up on the, I think Frank sent out the, um, this is the director of, uh, compliance and risk management under the Board of Supervisors now. And I believe he sent out the, uh, reorg chart too, at that. I think I got that during my, um, on Friday night or this weekend sometime. So first of all, I'm trying to figure out what issue we are trying to solve. I heard his, um, trying to answer Ray Sears on it. But clearly, in my opinion, um, this is no more than a blanket attempt to go around county attorney's office and taking responsibility away from the HR department, where I believe it belongs, so we can have that degree of separation. I don't know why in God's green earth we would take it away and out of HR. Um, once again, uh, the, some, some folks wanna, they're control freaks, I guess. I don't know. I, I can't for the, I, I can't figure out why. We just did this over a year ago and saved us two hundred, over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we hired an HR director with a law degree, and all of those folks over there do a bang-up job. We've worked with, uh, Jester for, I know, a long time, and, and maybe that's the issue. Uh, they do a great job. They're the largest insurance carrier probably in the state of Iowa. Uh, I, I don't know why we are doing this. Trying to save money, which is something Supervisor McCoy just mentioned, because the state's trying to strangle it. And now we're gonna create another new position. Um, so we're either giving people raises or we're creating new positions. And it just, it mind boggles me that, two weeks ago, Jill talked about, I said, you know, we wanna do strategic planning. We've got an interim county administrator that continues to do things to the county that we should be strategically talking about. But he's redoing Polk County government. I don't understand why we're doing these things. Um, and then during this org chart, and maybe I'm paranoid or looking at it wrong, we talk about the Polk County electorate. Supervisor, uh, McCoy comes right in the middle, which he should, because he's the chair, and then it goes straight to the county administrator. And, you know, there's five of us sitting here. So I, I'm assuming, and I hope I'm wrong, the county administrator needs to answer to the five of us, not just the chair. And it looks like he's only answering to the chair. And that is not what my voters, when we all got voted in, I don't think that's how it works. There's five elected officials that sit on this board. Whether we win or we lose at that table, there's five of us. And that interim county administrator needs to answer to five of us, not just the chair. I don't think anywhere in the code is any different. We don't have a different statutory authority. Nobody has, you know, it's, it, all it is, he sets the agenda, he signs resolutions, and he has new initiatives, but he's no different than any one of us. He represents a certain part. We all represent Polk County. So somebody explain to me this reorg chart.
I think if you look at it, Frank, I think what she's referring to, if you look at the chart, and maybe it doesn't mean this, but we get some clarification. Where the line goes, the line goes from, from the chair directly to you. And then, so it appears though, on the chart, when you look at it, that you only report to Supervisor McCoy, that you don't report to any of the rest of us. So that's what the question is.
Uh, no, obviously, I report to all of you, I think, in part. A lot of what, what needs to be done is what we're doing here today. I evaluate, I analyze operations. I'm simply proposing actions. And then you, as a board in a public meeting, get to deliberate it, rather than, you know, before making decisions, before we got to a meeting and having that already set up. So I think this is good for transparency. It's good to have these discussions now. You don't have to agree with my recommendations. They're just that, recommendations that I feel will benefit this county and the people we serve. Uh, I think that this position specifically will save us a great deal of money over time. I think a lot of things have been left on the table. And I think it is not a natural fit in human resources. This position needs to ensure risk and compliance across the county. It shouldn't have a check-off at a department level. It should report to the executives. And that's how it should function appropriately. That's good, solid organizational development that has been lacking.
Once again, I don't agree.
I'm.
There's no reason why the HR department can't report instead of being hamstrung to the Board of Supervisors. If there is some kind of risk or being told to do a statistical data analysis. I mean, I, I don't know. I realize that, you know, your background might be HR or whatever, but we don't need to hire a department head at, you know, whatever cost this is so that we can bypass the county attorney's office. They are statutory, are, are a legal authority. So you cannot bypass them, as much as you all want to. Period.
Well, I, I don't think any of us are asking to bypass the county attorney's office. That is not the intent of this. This is a really a directed, uh, effort. This is a, really a directed effort to try to, uh, focus on the area of risk and, and compliance. Last year, um, our, our employee health insurance increased twelve and a half percent. Our general casualty increased twelve and a half percent. This is the, the leading cause of, of the greatest expense that's, that's kind of uncontrollable, or what we hope has been uncontrollable. What we hope we can get in, under control, and that we can start making some impact on, on how we manage our risk as, as a county and how we go about managing that risk. That world has changed a great deal. And, and this is one of the single largest issues that local governments and state governments are struggling with, is how to, how to ensure and how to provide, uh, how to provide resources to direct towards risk management. And that is a, um, that is, that is an area that I think is sorely lacking. Now, if we try this and we find out that, um, we're not able to save money, we're not able to demonstrate cost savings, which I think we're certainly gonna measure, um, I think we'd be back to address this issue and say, you know, we tried it. We thought we could save money. We thought we could get control of our risk expense. We thought we could bring that under, under control, and we, we failed, and this wasn't the position that we expected it to be, and it, um, it, it fell short of the mark. I'm, I'm certainly willing to admit that, but, um, when I look at our peer groups around the country and around, uh, counties, around the state of Iowa and around the nation, um, I, I see them focusing, laser-focused on risk management and, and trying to create, uh, models that would improve and reduce, uh, the amount of funds that are going out, uh, from a risk management standpoint. And I think that's an area where we can potentially improve on. If, if we try it and it, uh, it falls short, we'll, we'll come back and redirect.
Roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
No.
Connolly?
No.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Numbers thirty-six through thirty-nine are resolutions approving the recommendations of the Polk County Assessor for allowances of the homestead tax credit, the homestead tax exemption, the disabled veteran tax credit, and the military service tax exemption.
So move.
Side in.
Roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty, resolution authorizing Auditor's Office to publish notice of public hearing for May twentieth on proposed amendment to the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And number forty-one, resolution approving applying IEC Hotel Series B principal and interest payments to the FFNE Reserve for the Hilton Des Moines Downtown Hotel.
So move.
Move.
Roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty-two, resolution approving funding to the Permanent Supportive Housing Fund at the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines.
So move.
Side in.
Roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty-three, resolution directing the county attorney's office to provide the Board of Supervisors with full and unfettered access to the November twenty-four, twenty-twenty, and the December sixteen, twenty-twenty closed-door session meeting minutes and audio recording for the board members to review in a confidential setting.
I do have a, uh, sense amendment to this. Um, we're, uh, under the last item, now therefore be it resolved, the Polk County Attorney's Office and/or Kimberly Graham, uh, I would add the word "or", the Polk County Auditor's Office and Jamie Fitzgerald to that. So I'm adding "or", the Polk County Auditor's Office and Jamie Fitzgerald. The reason for that is there are legal custodians being the county auditor. Uh, but it's my understanding we will, uh, also require approval from the county attorney's office, uh, to release these records. So I'm adding that section as a way to clear up any confusion on the directive.
Second. I got, I just, I, I have a number of questions about this. Um, I, I question whether or not it's even legal for us to take this action. It's my understanding, excuse me, it's my understanding, um, that, and I think the, the chairman's right. Uh, he is the, Jamie is a legal custodian of, of all those documents. Um, he would be, he would have, have to take action at some level, um, to allow these documents to be released. Um, I don't know if you, do you have any comments, Mary, at all?
Um, the Jamie Fitzgerald's office is the legal repository of the sealed closed-session materials. Um, this is a matter with the Polk County Attorney's Office. I spoke to the board about.
Um, I don't know if Kimberly, you wanna address this, or you want me to? I, I have to be mindful of our attorney-client conversations here.
I guess, I'll just say, you know, based on all the conflicting stuff, I have no idea of what's legal here, and I'm taking great solace in knowing that a judge will determine this. So we're gonna move this forward, and the judge will determine what is releasable or not, based on whatever action follows after this, because I have received so much vastly divergent information that I'm moving it. The court will resolve.
Well, the issue is, and, and Kimberly, I guess you can speak to this or not, but I think we've all received the correspondence from you, and, and we've all read what your position is, um, on this matter. And when our own county attorney, this is not the Civil Division, and that's it, this is our county attorney that's giving this advice, and we're gonna not listen to the advice of our own county attorney? That's, it appears like what we're doing.
Well, I, and Mark, this comment about the court, I think the court's already ruled on this.
Three times. Three times.
Okay.
They've ruled it three times.
I think the position of the county attorney's office is consistent with Supervisor Home, that this is an issue that should be resolved by a writ, as, as we have discussed Supervisor McCoy. That this should be a matter for court intervention before the closed-session recordings are unsealed.
Even though it's already been before court three times already?
That issue will be raised with the court.
Yeah, there's other litigation that are, it's, it's almost identical, that have been taken to the court, and the court has said no.
The Polk County Attorney's Office would feel most comfortable, and I don't mean to speak for Supervisor McCoy, but we've had this discussion, that we think a writ would be the best manner to resolve this with a court ruling, that it would take a court ruling.
And, and I, I do feel strongly that these, these are, um, board documents that belong to the board. They're, uh, they're board documents that should, uh, be available to the board and should be considered on a merit of ongoing litigation against the county. And I believe that the surest way to determine whether this is, uh, going to be, um, you know, an issue that's taken up by the courts or not taken up by the courts, would be to pass this resolution and then allow, as Supervisor Home indicated, a judge to make a determination on this issue alone. Again, this issue has not been litigated alone, and, and that's what a motion to compel would do, uh, with a writ. And, uh, I believe that's the most appropriate action at this time, so, um.
Well, I, I, I believe we are in total conflict. Our fiduciary duties to the county, we're, we're, I thought we were supposed to be preserving our attorney-client privilege.
This, this doesn't violate that.
Well, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Um, I'm voting no. I, I think this is so wrong that we have this in front of the Board of Supervisors.
Roll call.
So I have, um, moved by Altringer and seconded by Home on the resolution as amended. Uh, roll call. Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
No.
Connolly?
No.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Number forty-four, resolution approving a community development grant for Friends of Iowa Speech and Debate. And numbers forty-five and forty-six are resolutions approving community betterment grant awards and community sponsorship awards.
Second.
Roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Communications, number forty-seven, notice of appraisement of damages and time for appeal in the matter of the condemnation of certain rights and land for the Southeast Eighth Street and East Market Street Pump Station Enforced Main Project.
Refer to treasurer and county attorney.
Number forty-eight, request for tax abatement for property at one zero zero two West Washington Avenue, Polk City.
Refer to assessor, treasurer, and county attorney.
Forty-nine, city development board filing of written decision in the matter of the City of Altoona voluntary annexation within the urbanized area of the cities of Bondurant, Ankeny, and Des Moines.
Refer to public works and county attorney. Budget actions, are there any?
Yes, we do have a budget action. Uh, I mean, essentially, do we have Deb to describe, or? So we have, um, uh, we have, uh, from the Grants Fund to the Office Department Behavioral Health and Disability Services, sub-activity reimbursable MHDs direct expense. And, um, from mental health, behavioral health and disability services to mental health, um, it is all service area four expenses. Um, we've got a proposed appropriation from the Grants at sixteen million two three three eight oh three, and a current appropriation from the mental health at sixteen million two three three eight oh three. And, um, I just need a motion in a second, or if folks need an explanation, somebody from the budget office.
Okay. So move.
Second.
Uh, Deb, do you have anything to add to that, to just?
Sure. It, it, Deb Anderson with Polk County Board of Supervisors' Office. This is just a technical correction to the budget certification process for twenty-five, twenty-six. When we originally published, uh, the, the notice of, for the public hearing on the budget, we had included the sixteen million dollars for mental health services within service area four. Um, we later on found out that because of the change in the way mental health services are being delivered in the upcoming year, we needed to move it to service area nine. Because we'd originally published it in four, we were unable to make the change from what we'd originally published. So today, what you approved earlier did not have this expenditure in the certified budget. This memo budget action puts it back into the budget, so we're back exactly where we started. We did, we're just making a technical correction to where we put the, the funding going forward.
Thanks for the clarification. Roll call.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Appointments?
Need a motion in a second?
So move.
Side in.
Home?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Any board member comments?
I have one.
I got, I, I got, I'll get, get done real, real quickly here, Angela. First of all, Mr. Marasco, I'm offended that you would, uh, infer that I didn't care about law enforcement safety and law enforcement officer's safety, and you did that here today. There's been no bigger supporter in this community of law enforcement than me. So how dare you infer that I didn't care about law enforcement and the safety of law enforcement officers, period. And, and as far as partnerships go, we've heard all about these partnerships today. We should partnership this way. We should have partnerships that way. We should partnership this way, we should have partnerships that way. That armored vehicle you're talking about, Des Moines has one, and we've borrowed it before. You misled our staff when you told them that you needed it five to seven times per year in the sheriff's office. That is untrue, because when you check the Des Moines Police Department, you know how many times we asked for it in 2024, Frank? You know how many times? None. Oh, I take that back. Once for a neighborhood, a neighborhood night out. So don't, don't infer that I don't care about law enforcement safety.
Okay, can I, are we, is anybody else-
I'm done.
-or can I say something? Okay. I just want to talk a little bit about my friend, Jay Byers, and mention that I know a lot's been said in the news and on social media about all the wonderful tributes that have come in, and they've all been very, they're all true. First and foremost, my heart aches for Katie, Charlotte, and Sophie. He was a wonderful community leader. He, we're all going to feel this tremendous loss. He did believe anything was possible, as long as we could do it together. He was the heart and soul of regionalism, speaking for one voice. And in Jay's words, "We always had the secret sauce to make things happen." I sat on so many committees with him over the years. Before he became the CEO of the partnership, he was always the greeter in DC so many years. All this other noise that goes on up here at this board tables, I'm setting out my priorities totally different. While these are all important, I'm going to continue to vote for what I think is important for my, for the taxpayers of Polk County. So on those Tuesday mornings, while I know most of the time my vote will not count, I still have a voice and an opinion. And I'm going to try to do better. Today, I was not as calm as I wanted to be, but I'm going to try to do better in the hopes that Jay will give me the strength to guide us from above and shine a little light on us. It's important to remember today was Mental Health Awareness Day, and it's important that we all reach out when we think someone's struggling. Just remember that when you're out and about. There's always something that someone needs help on. Thanks for letting me speak.
Mr. Chair, if I may-
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, Jill?
No, Angela, I was going to thank you for those comments. Jay hit our family very generationally. My husband went to college with him. Jay played basketball, my husband wrestled. I served on boards with him, great leader in the community, and now my son goes to Simpson and got word actually before the rest of us because they wanted the students to be prepared. So I think you had great comments, and I think you're right, that we can all take a lot of lessons from him. I'd like to add to that that I specifically, for the first meeting, sorry, the first meeting after we were sworn in, requested that board member comments be included on the agenda so that we all have this opportunity to discuss things with each other. And I'd like to request that we use a certain amount of decorum while doing it. I don't think taking tones or threatening nature qualifies for what I, why I asked for board comments to be on here. So, Mr. Chair, we may need to reevaluate this or set some parameters.
Yeah, I think your comments are very well-received, and I think civility and decorum is an important part of any functioning board, and I would like to be in a place where we can improve that and really challenge each individual member to think about and carry their comments in a way that is reflective of that spirit. That being said, I, you know, I worked at the partnership for five years, and I worked closely with Jay. We served on government relations for the region together, and I know he will be missed by this community, but I did say that his work in regionalism, to Angela's point, I think will live on in the community, and we can look at all of the projects that are occurring and working together in a regional way as a result of those early-laid efforts, and that will continue, and that will remind us of the spirit that he approached regionalism and where we all need to continue to reach as board members.
Before we close, may I ask, how are we doing on the search? I know this may be redundant. This will be the third time that I've asked.
It's been asked and answered. We're not ready for that at this time, so we've made a determination.
That's your answer, that you're not, you're not ready for it?
That is my answer, yes. It's been asked and answered, yep.
That's, we were guaranteed that we were going to do a search, a national search.
I never guaranteed anything. That's not true.
Well, there's five of us, but-
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we, you know, have a closed session?
Uh, no, we do not.
All right. All right. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Holm?
Yes.
Hawkinsmith?
Yes.
Connolly?
Yes.
Supervisor Connolly?
Yes.
Altringer?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.